Okay, we start at 5:28 or do we need to wait till 5:30? Does it make any difference?
I don't think it does.
We'll call our council meeting to order and in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws of 1976, Section 30-4-80D as amended notification of meeting's agenda were posted at least 24 hours prior to meeting on county council meeting in public accessible place on the county website and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons, organizations requesting information. Item two, public body may hold a meeting closer to public for one of the more following reasons, discussion of negotiations, incident proposed contract arrangements, proposed purchase or sale of property where they would receive legal advice, where the legal advice related to pending threat or potential claim and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims or the position of a public agency and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim, map number 087-00-05-008, as well as ending in 009, detention center G.I.S. services contract with G.I.S., Geospatial Solutions LLC, as well as exit three, during discussions of matters relating to proposed location expansion of division of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body, prospect update, project salmon. This time we'll call for motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the following items that was outlined.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Go into executive session. Okay, at this time we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session at this time.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Any actions, motions coming out of executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that I move to authorize the county administrator to execute a G.I.S. services contract with Geospatial Solutions LLC to provide geographic information services as requested by the county on the terms and conditions as discussed in executive session, which provide for an hourly rate of $75 per hour for a minimum of eight hours a week.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time we'll have our pledge allegiance followed by indication by council.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time coming together to make decisions on behalf of the county and Father, grant us wisdom and guidance tonight as we go through these issues and Father, we pray our hand of protection over all the folks going out tomorrow voting and doing their duty for their country and we ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, we have approval of our consent agenda, we have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that the consent agenda be approved.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And also approval of our regular agenda, please.
I'll make a motion that the agenda be accepted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And we'll start with our presentation by Chief Wells with an update on the Tillman-Cusahatchie Fire Department.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Just a quick update on our fire station situation with Cusahatchie and Tillman. The property owner notified us Friday, November 1 that they had made it through some probate challenges and that they were cleared to proceed. The county attorney will begin working with their legal counsel on refining out and making a move toward the acquisition. We did meet with the architectural and engineering firm on the design, we are waiting to get back the conceptual designs and drawings for those, but there is one thing to note, we have started receiving some inquiries regarding what is to become of the building that we no longer use, so that we'll be coming back to y'all with some level of request for liquidation on that. So on October 30, 2024, a tree company arrived to complete the tree work on the Tillman Fire Station. As you can see, the extent of the damage once the tree was removed revealed some additional damage that we were unable to see and as you can see here, this is a broken support column on the corner of the building. Councilman Rowland, with his background, should understand this is going to be the Bravo Charlie corner of that building. It is one of the primary support beams for the vertical structure, as you can see here on the corner. The next one, where that arrow is, would be the next support column, we'll come back to that particular element and then you can see where the tree actually came down into the bay. As you can see, the wall down here, close to the bottom, next to the concrete, that wall has been pushed away from the foundation and then a lateral support column where that arrow is, if you look down, you'll see where it is fractured and pulled back from the foundations as well. Taking a look at the roof structure, you can see that the cross member support beam was ripped away from the roof trusses, again, without a structural engineering assessment, we don't know what the involvement of the roof trusses are going to be, as well as some other wall integrity concerns that we have. Path moving forward, we are awaiting a quote from contractors for repair cost and the living quarters mold remediation, things that we are considering is raising the building and then seeking RFPs for an emergency modular style living quarters and then a lightweight carport style apparatus bay on the existing foundation and then the other option that y'all could potentially consider is complete replacement, temporary relocation, raising the current building and with a concurrent design of that like Cusahatchie. Other than that, we have an answer, any questions?
No questions, just more of a statement, I'm more of the opinion with option three, if we can look at that financially moving down the road with, instead of putting a Band-Aid on it, to actually build a purpose-built fire station for that community.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you for that input, we are a staff-level meeting to redo, do an update of the capital improvement plan and bring it back to you all to go through, so we will keep that in mind, that's the general consensus of the council, trying to make that work.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, you said use the Cusahatchie.
It would be something similar, similar to that.
But when you, when they do the Cusahatchie, they're doing that, they're doing that now, I understand they do it in four bays rather than three.
Correct.
So could you make sure that there's a validity of reducing that, I think that's what you would want to do with the Tillman, right?
That was the, that was our very specific request to the architectural firm is to make the fire stations, while standardized as much as possible, scalable, that would meet the needs of our growth and development and more spoke the communities in which those stations would be embedded in.
I would say this, option three.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Thank you. Next is a proclamation for the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League from the Jasper County Council to show Jasper County support of National Red Ribbon Week from October 23 to 31st. Ms. Wanda, do we have anybody here for that?
Ms. Lawton. Ms. Lawton wouldn't be able to attend, she said, but she just asked that this be read and signed off on by council so she can send it up to the Young Marines Corps. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families and communities across the nation and whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them and whereas it is imperative, invisibly not unified efforts by community members to watch for the drug abuse, whereas Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles and whereas governments and community leaders make the citizen's support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities and whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, military, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, organizations such as the Young Marine Corps League and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to foster a healthy drug-free lifestyle and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement and drug prevention and reduction efforts and whereas October 23rd through 31st have been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to support, to show their support for a drug-free environment, whereas the community of Jasper County further commits to promoting the ongoing future success of Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore being resolved, the County Council of Jasper County, South Carolina, does hereby support and proclaim and observe it's October 23rd through 31st of 2024 as Red Ribbon Week and urges all citizens to join the special observance dated this fourth day of November 2024, signed by our chair.
Thank you. Resolutions, Mr. Fuller, consideration of resolution R-2024-36 authorizing donation to Technical College of the Work Country for the OFAE Brown Regional Workforce Training Center.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this resolution comes before you after your discussion at previous meetings about the potential of making a donation to the effort, TCL's effort for their workforce training center. This memorializes your desire to contribute $1 million from the Commercial Development Fund and also directs me to prepare a budget amendment for your consideration at a later date to be able to make that happen. If you have to answer any questions that you have, but ultimately requesting your consideration of adopting a resolution.
Yes. In due course, can you give me a date, it's like, you say in due course, but then another thing.
The budget amendment?
On the amendment to the budget.
Well, we could, we could do it right away, but typically I'd just give it Ms. Burgess to see if we have a batch of items that come back to you. We'll have to do it for this budget here.
Okay, and the Commercial Development Fund, how much is in there?
I think it's, you're roughly at one and a half million, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's one and a half, so we're really going to spend it all?
You're going to expend it all, remember that we fairly recently, in the last few years, had the dedication of the funds, we talked about this when we got into the economic development agreement with the city of Hardyville about establishing a commercial development fund to be used for regional projects, you remember they questioned about being a participant in that, how we would use the funds and we said we had traditionally used it prior to the protest. So we have a certain percentage being carved off some of those fillows to go into this fund, that fund also previously had rents from Ohio Grading, which we no longer receive and so forth, so yes, sir, this will potentially wipe it out, but we do have continuous funds coming in each year.
And just one other thing, just a clarification, just to make sure, on it you have, this is an addition to other funds.
Oh, yes, sir.
That's just what's already there on that civic aid, correct? It's not that we're pocketing ourselves to more money.
No, sir, a million only.
That's it, I don't need any more.
All right. Any other questions?
This time we'll call for a motion, please.
Make a motion that will be accepted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Mr. Fuller, your item 10.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, a second resolution is for the council to consider adopting this resolution, which would approve an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Hardyville to provide the donation, a contribution of $500,000 and that would go towards the project that we've discussed numerous times, the exit eight sewer project, whereas we have dubbed it earlier a project Mr. Seaton, that involves an infusion of capital in that area for utility improvements that will bring in some additional investment in that area. As you can see in the packet, we've had the attachments to the intergovernmental agreement that provide the information provided by the city, it's about a $6 million construction project of which they anticipate 1.5 million donations, 500,000 for the construction from the city of Hardyville, 500,000 from the county and 500,000 from D for Jasper Water Sewer. So this document just memorializes what we said, the intergovernmental agreements, we basically put in place just to protect the donation and what our responsibilities are, it is fashioned after the transportation sales tax agreements, simply says that the city, they procure this, they'll procure it appropriately and so forth and you're simply a funder in the project. Be happy to answer any other questions you have, but this particular resolution again adopts the IGA, which we will send to the city, had discussions with the city manager about that, which pledges the $500,000 from the county for the project.
Madam Chair, if you will conduct this with item 10, I'll be accusing myself of this item.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
No questions, just a comment, I do think that this is a good contribution on our efforts to support some economic development in that exit eight corridor that will continue to thrive and benefit multiple entities in the county.
Thank you.
I just think that this, again, I agree with what Councilman Rawl said, but this could return investment to an extent. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
This, yes.
Could I just expound from the record, the chairman has recused himself, he's filed with the parliamentarian, with the Parke Court, placed to the minute, the appropriate written recusing form.
Thank you. Call for motion.
I'd like to make a motion to have consideration of resolution R-2024-37 authorizing money to be spent, $500,000, to that station.
Second.
You'd expect approval, I'll put it second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Advance to Ms. Killian Burgess, consideration of resolution R-2024-38 authorizing emergency procurement for renovation of portions of the detention center damaged by fire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is a resolution, as you mentioned, to begin, to have the repairs and replacement of items that were damaged by the fire at the detention center. This will allow Gordian, who is a procurement, has a procurement cooperative agreement that we are a member of, the county is a member of, and there is one change in the copy that you received previously, I received an email from Gordian that one of the, they had made an estimate of the padded room at the detention center, they have now received a quotation which is higher than they anticipated, so rather than having 199,000 as the not-to-exceed amount in this resolution, we would like to take that to 300,000. So there would be a change in that not-to-exceed 300,000 for the repairs, renovation and replacement as provided in the work order, which was also included in your packet.
Any questions, Mr. Allen?
No questions.
Mr. King?
None.
This time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I'll make a motion that it be approved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can we clarify that the motion includes the increased amount of exact to be not-to-exceed?
Not-to-exceed.
Not-to-exceed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Ms. Burgess, consideration of resolution R-2024-39 to declare certain emergency services properties to be surplus and authorize its demolition and disposition pursuant to section 2-425 of the Deputy County Code of Ordinance.
Yes, sir, thank you again, we would like to acquire this piece of property, this mobile classroom, which has been used as a training center, is currently located at Fire Station Road, as surplus and then authorize it to be demolished and then disposed of, it is in, you saw the pictures, it is in dire condition and really is no longer usable as it was intended, it was donated about 10 years ago and we just need to move it off the property so we can determine what would replace it, what would be a good use.
Thank you, Chief.
Find something else to replace it.
Any questions, Ms. Clark?
None.
Just one question, when they do dispose, it'll be done at staff level, we're not going to hire outside contractors to demo it?
Yes, sir, we've got several individuals that are qualified and capable of operating the equipment necessary to destroy it and then we would work with public works to obtain the necessary containers, packet in that and how to dispose it.
Is this any part of the sheriff's department, detective department, had it, considered with the trailer? Is there any correlation between those two?
No, sir, that trailer came from the property down on Currys Burke Road during, I believe it was a development, it was an office trailer, they no longer needed it, they offered it up for a donation, we received it, sent it up on the property and it was a minimal investment for us to just move it and set it up, but we did everything we could to keep up with the maintenance, but subsequently just.
We're not going to have the same problems we did with the sheriff's department, really, so we went back.
Yes, sir.
Okay. One more, like it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I'd like to make a motion, our resolution R-2024-39 to declare certain emergency services properties to be surplus, all right, we stand by and just say.
Second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, Mr. Tatter, consideration of resolution R-2024-40 committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of taxes agreed up between Jasper County and Project Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'm very pleased to be bringing this to District Resolution Board. At the end of last weekend, over the weekend, we were notified that the project is apparently going to locate in South Hardyville, down in Hardyville. This is an advanced manufacturing facility, it's going to invest all total $134 million and create upwards of 570 good-paying jobs, starting out at $30 an hour plus benefits. They are manufacturing a specialty conductor for high transmission lines, they're excited about coming here, they asked us to move this forward as quickly as possible, in the package, they're due to resolution committing to negotiate a fee in lieu. There's an existing fee in lieu down there already on the property, 40% for 30 years, they've asked us to carve this out with a 30-year term and. They've asked us to carve this out, uh, with a 30-year term and, uh, increase, uh, the SS, Special Source Revenue Credit, SSRCs, to 50%. The performance that we'll provide to you is being finalized and redeveloped. Those numbers will be out there, but upwards of, of, uh, over a million dollars net to the county over, over each year of the, uh, FLO agreement, plus, uh, basically about a $25 million annual payroll, um, within reach capacity. Over the weekend, this, today, I received a request to change three, uh, three small wording items in the inducement resolution to clarify that it was a, um, a conductor manufacturing facility, that they are sponsor affiliate under the FLO, FLO agreement rather than a sponsor, um, and, um, the other one was to, um, agree that it's not, won't be an assignment of the existing FLO agreement, but a, a new FLO agreement coming in place there. So if you're inclined to do that, um, adopt this inducement resolution, I would ask that you adopt, uh, provided you a blue line, red line, with those words in it, and a new resolution to be substituted, the property provided to you might be substituted for the one in your package, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Clark?
None.
Mr. Rawlins?
We've been offered...
Not at this time.
Mr. Kim? Make it this time. This time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I'll make a motion that the resolution be accepted, R-2024-40, committing to negotiate a fee in lieu or ever on tax agreement between Jasper County and Project Santa.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, Mr. Forging, public hearing in consideration of the third reading of ordinance 0-2024-23, authorizing the sale to S&amp;P Produce Inc.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this ordinance has a lengthy history that can be identified parenthetically after the title. Uh, you remember that you had a, a public hearing only at your last meeting, um, I'm sorry, the 10-7 meeting, and so we've attached another public hearing this evening for this ordinance, ultimately asking for your consideration of third reading after the benefit of a public hearing. Quick summary, if, this is to propose to sell 10 acres of the Cypress Ridge Development. This is part to S&amp;P Produce Inc. for the purpose of the building, a new building in that prospect is bringing 19 new jobs with a $2.9 million investment. The sale is at $15,000 an acre for a total of 150,000.
Any questions, Ms. Clark?
None.
No questions?
No question.
This time we'll open the floor for our public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on a specific matter, please feel free to do so at this time. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed. This time we'll call for a, uh, third reading.
Make a motion that we, uh, consideration of approval for the third reading of ordinance 0-24, 2024-23.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Mr. David Tatter, public hearing in consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2024-24, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of taxes agreed up between Jasper County, South Carolina, and S&amp;P Produce Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This matter's been before several times. We had a public hearing on the 21st of October. Uh, this is, uh, putting in an incentive agreement and a, to a FLO agreement for this property. Project Veggie, as you might remember, uh, is a food distribution facility. Um, we're selling, as you just know, some land out there for them to do it. Um, they'll be investing approximately $3 million in creating 19 new jobs out there. Um, the incentive agreement is to, um, give them a, um, lock in the village rate for a period of time, and I believe it's a, um, let me find it again. 10%, uh, 10% SSRC. It's all in your package, uh, the final document. There will be some minor insertions in there to put dates and things of that nature in there.
I couldn't hear you, sir.
Not there?
I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
What did you just, I couldn't hear you.
Uh, there'll be some dates in, we have some blanks in the document that you have there. As a due course, we always insert adoption dates, ordinance numbers, those types of things, but the final document, uh, it has the name of the developer or owner are in, are included in there.
Okay, at this time we'll, uh, open the floor for our public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on this specific topic, please feel free to do so at this time. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed. Uh, any questions, Ms. Clark?
None.
No questions?
Mr. Kim? This time we'll call for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that this be the second reading of ordinance, it's a third reading.
Of ordinance 0-2024?
24. 0-2024, 24.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Tatter?
Public hearing in consideration of second reading of ordinance 0-2024-26, authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreed up between Jasper County SC and Project Pill, Pill Village, with respect to certain economic development property in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we addressed this at our last meeting. Project Pill, Pill Village, um, is a project, uh, down in the Hardyville area. Uh, this is a part of the Freedom Industrial Park down there. Uh, they intend to, uh, invest money down there, uh, and they've asked for this project to get as an existing FLO. They've asked for a, uh, additional SSRC to be granted to them, which, uh, is a 25% credit during years one to five, and a 10% SSRC credit for year six through 10. Again, locks in the village. It's a fairly simple FLO agreement. The property is located down near, uh, the Granite Manufacturing Facility in, uh, 117 and 178, somewhere near the county. Their investing, their investment is, uh, 70 million dollars.
This time we'll open the floor to the public. Anybody wishing to address council on this specific topic, please feel free to do so at this time. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed, and we'll call for a motion for a second reading.
I'll make a motion that this be the second reading of ordinance 0-2024-6.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, next, Mr. David Tatter, public hearing in consideration of the second reading of ordinance 0-2024-27, to establish pursuant to section four dash one dash 170, code laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended to Multi-County Industrial Park in conjunction with Beaufort County, South Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, uh, a different project. This is one where Beaufort County is a sponsored county, asking certain, County Park, and for us to participate in it. This is for a defense contracting firm that, uh, is going to locate in Beaufort. It's a $7.1 million investment. Uh, we will, uh, receive as our, um, participation fee in this, the 1% we normally give to another county, uh, to be the participating county for us. And this is up for a, uh, public hearing as well tonight. I'm happy to ask you what questions I can.
Questions from council?
None.
No questions?
No, but... This time we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed, and we'll call for a motion for second reading.
I'll make a motion that this be the second reading of ordinance 0-2024-27.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, Ms. Wagner, consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2024-25, open ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County, as to transfer three parcels located at 1607, 1613, and 1694, Deerfield Road.
This ordinance is them for you, uh, for two readings. Then we had a public hearing at the last meeting. Um, the application came through a, uh, applicant, a property owner, and also the Jasper County Land and Commission. So you summed it up in your title, the request is to rezone it from, uh, rural preservation to residential, and it's three properties, that Deerfield Road. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any changes, Ms. Wagner?
No changes.
Any questions from council?
None.
No question.
This time we'll call for a motion for approval of third reading.
Make a motion that this be the consideration of the third reading of this ordinance.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Ms. Wagner, um, the public hearing before the ordinance goes up, planned development district's only for three tracks of land consisting of approximately 30 acres, uh, very tax-free, between 017, 018, and 014 along Speedway Boulevard.
This was for you, um, at your last meeting for first reading. Um, Councilmember Kent mentioned that he'd like to have a workshop, so we do need to schedule that, but it was, um, a public hearing was scheduled for tonight. The properties were posted and letters were sent out to, um, the property owners. We have not received any written comments. And so I'll move out of the way for the public hearing.
Okay, this time we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council at this time?
Yes, good evening. I'm Mark Barrano. I'm the managing partner of Jasper Telecare One. I'm the owner of the track, and I'm therefore in favor of the development, but I just took my name down in case there were some questions. Traffic aesthetics, some of those things were mentioned in the last, uh, hearing, and so I know a workshop has been suggested, and I'm ready to meet and discuss that when, when convenient, if I may.
Thank you, sir. Any others? We're in none in the public hearing, it's now closed. Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. David Tatter, public hearing only, open ordinance approving the development agreement for the Jasper Telecare track pursuant to South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act in Article Four, Title Twenty of the Code Ordinance of Jasper County.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council, as I mentioned to you in the last, uh, meeting, we brought this for a very reading, uh, and it was talk of a workshop on this because we need some direction, especially on the PD meeting we just, you just had before you, um, that we had already, uh, scheduled a public hearing for tonight. Uh, there were two required public hearings on the development agreement. This is the first one. We have to announce tonight the second public hearing. Uh, I would, uh, suggest that you take into consideration the holiday schedule that we have coming upon us, the amount of work that we need doing this, and determine whether you'll be ready at the December 2nd meeting, or you, do we need to push it into the January 6th meeting, uh, for, for the next public hearing? And it is up again for, uh, public comments, a public hearing comment tonight. Uh, the, the issues that we're looking at, I think, Mr. Kim and the council discussed last time, we're looking at the, um, traffic access and mitigation, those types of matters down there on 17 and 315, where it's, uh, set to be.
Uh, at this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on a specific matter, please feel free to do so. Public hearing going twice. Three times. Hearing is now closed. And, Councilman Kim, would this be an item maybe for, if we do the workshop on November 18th, that's fine, if that's how we want to operate? Okay, um, next, uh, Mr. David Tatter.
Mr. Chairman, if you're going to do the workshop on November 18th, are you going to consider having a public hearing at the next meeting after that, which would be December 2nd, to announce a public hearing, not the third reading, but our next reading, but the, uh, the additional public hearing? Statute requires us to announce it whenever... You can have, you can have as many public hearings as you want. Uh, you can have another one after that.
I think we just had concerns with traffic and how that works, exactly, I mean, after?
Discussion of traffic, discussion of what's going to happen at day one, 315, et cetera.
And you said we can have additional public hearings?
You can have additional public hearings. There's no, I'm just, I don't want to just try to set your agenda for you, but if you're willing to do another public hearing on December 2nd, say so. We'll put her on the agenda, and it can be announced tonight that that will be the second public hearing. You can have a third public hearing in January if you need it, or, or, or whatever.
Okay.
So if you, December 2nd, additional public hearing.
I have a public, another public hearing.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay. And we're on item 20 now. Public hearing in consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2024-21, authorizing the sale to Graves, SC Graves LLC, of a 1.9, 1.9 acre parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project has been around for a little bit. This is the one that, uh, SC Gray already owns, the existing parcel, at Cypress Ridge Industrial Park. They're, uh, seeking to obtain a 1.19 acre parcel adjacent to it. The, uh, we've had hearings and readings of this before. We've been waiting on getting the final survey. We had a little problem getting it worked out when we discovered there was an easement, uh, the approachment out there. Uh, in the package, you have the final survey. Um, we're ready to have, um, another public hearing because of the length of time involved in that, so we, we set on the, on the agenda. Uh, there will be, if you look at the survey, there is a, uh, Stowmore pipe and a utility water easement right on the edge of the property, so indeed, uh, we'll be reserving easement rights, uh, in that area, uh, the use of that. That's part of the actual closing documents. That need to be part of the ordinance. I just wanted you to be aware that there will be an additional argument, air discourse. The, uh, purchase price, uh, again, is, um, I apologize, I have to look again, $50,000.
Any questions from council before we have a public hearing? This time we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Public hearing going twice. Three times. Public hearing is now closed, and we call for, uh, a motion for a third reading.
I'll make a motion that this be the third reading of this ordinance, authorizing the sale to SC Graves LLC, uh, a 1.90 acres.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Ms. Burgess, consideration and approval of assistance of federal grant from the Office of Highway Safety and Justice Programs in the amount of $27,048.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council. Uh, the South Carolina Department of Public Safety Office of Highway Safety and Justice Programs awarded Jasper County Sheriff's Office a highway safety grant in the amount of $27,048 for the period October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025. This is a federal grant, and it will be used to offset the cost of overtime wages and the related employer portion of fringe benefits for sheriff office personnel to perform additional dedicated traffic enforcement, as well as additional hours to participate in checkpoints, saturation patrols, and other enforcement activities. Staff would like the council to approve the receipt of this federal grant and authorize Sheriff Hith to accept the grant.
Any questions from council?
No questions, just, uh, it's a good thing to receive some free money to go out and enforce some of these traffic issues that we're having.
Kim, do you have any questions?
No.
This time we'll call for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that the grant be accepted in the amount of $27,048.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Ms. Burgess, consideration... Ms. Burgess, consideration and approval of work authorization for up there at 112 Wetherby Street, reason for temporary relocation of the Pratt Memorial Library.
Yes, sir, thank you. 112 Wetherby Street in Ridgeland was purchased as to provide a temporary library space while Pratt Memorial Library is being upfitted and renovated. We have already, we reached out to MBCom Construction in order to provide upfit for the 112 Wetherby for the temporary library. This is the work authorization provided by MBCom and it is in the amount of $205,210 that authorizes MBCom to proceed with pre-construction services, including preparation of the GMP. And these renovations will be funded with the offer funds as well as potentially some bond issuance proceeds. So we would like counsel to approve this work authorization number six from MBCom Construction Company in the amount of $205,210.
Any questions?
And to allow the county administrator to execute the work authorization.
Any questions?
If approved, what's the start date looking like to go in with this?
It's in the very, Danny probably knows better than I, but I think it's in just a matter of a couple of weeks, if not a summer.
Yes, sir, that's correct, just a few weeks. We had some issues. We're trying to find a brand new contractor. We finally got that done. We got the parking lot situation worked out. We're ready to move on with the HBAC system at 112 Wetherby. So the contract on that is the person who gave us the initial review of it. So they're very familiar with the building and the parts are, let's say, available. So we're ready to move on with the project. And we'll get the HBAC system fixed and we're going to move just a couple of non-lump-bearing walls and a few other small items to make that building more accessible and open for the temporary library.
Any questions, Ms. Rowland?
Any more questions, Ms. Kim?
That was for the effect, that was, we got to reduce the way.
Yes, sir, we reduced the price by $45,000 to cover the cost of the HBAC renovations.
Thank you.
No.
This time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
Make a motion we approve the work authorization for upfit of 112 Wetherby Street for the temporary relocation of Pratt Memorial Library.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next for a public comment, we have Ms. Kathy Decourcy.
All right, I'm asking.
Okay. Moving on to the administrative report.
Mr. Chairman, members of counsel, I had a couple items on my administrative report. One is the Levy Sewer Project. I told you I'd report on that. The team, the team consists of county staff, Ms. Heather Raff, consultant, Beaufort Jasper Order Sew Authority staff, and also the LECOg staff are working on trying to see if we can make the deadline for the EPA Community Change Grant application, which is November 21st. So we'll continue to let you know when we make that. Now that you're having your meeting on the 18th, if we have any additional items that you need to approve prior to the cement of that grant, perhaps we could use that meeting for that opportunity. My next meeting, I think, is Friday with the team. And I'll let you know if we have any fatal flaws, if there are any reasons we can't go forward. I wanted to mention two things that aren't on my report. One, the chief just distributed. The first one, though, is about the Community Development Lot Grant, the Church Steady Neighborhood Revitalization Grant. Ms. Wagner has been running for the last several years. It's a massive project and we need to remind ourselves about that. We'll be including that in our cap improvement plan because it's continuing to go on. Construction is going on currently. They're going to monitor that grant, which means that the state will come in with the assistance of LECOg and go through all of our records to make sure that we were procuring things correctly and that we were administering the grant correctly. And so that's coming. Ms. Burgess doesn't know that, but I got the letter today. And we have to assemble some information for their review in very short order, so I'll hand you that. The item that I passed out is concerning an old EDA grant that the county applied for. And it has somewhat sordid history. We applied for it back in 2019. And it was right at the COVID era, 2020. And that was proposed to leverage some of the 2016 transportation sales tax funds to do a widening project here in Route 278 originally. The total project was to estimate the cost of about $2,177,000. We proposed to put in $750,000 worth of the transportation sales tax, which we now have not had to do. And EDA offered a grant with a large match. I can't remember what the match percentage was, but it's larger than the programs today. And it was of $1.1 million. That project procured professional services through that through using transportation sales tax funds. And ultimately, the project failed because it could not be completed in time for the grant to be awarded successfully. The engineering firm had difficulty obtaining DOT's approval. And so council ultimately had general consensus to go ahead and terminate the engineering contract. And also terminate the grant for convenience, which is a way that you can terminate a grant offer without any harm to the county or any obligations. And so that has come full circle, all the way from 2020 to 2024, where they're ready to re-obligate the funds back to the treasury. And this is the letter I received just this past Thursday. That will require my signature on the offer to terminate financial assistance in award for convenience. Just asking for your permission, if you would, by motion, to allow me to sign this, which reduces any, eliminates any obligations on our part. There was no money spent on the project that would qualify. I did notice that in one of the sections on the forms, it identifies us as the Cohoma County Board of Supervisors, which I believe needs to be corrected. I believe that's in Mississippi. But if you would, I can sign it with your authority. Yes, sir.
Call for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that you be granted permission to sign the document.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next concludes my report unless, of course, you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Councilmember comments? I'd first like to say my condolences and to keep the families. We had three fatalities over the weekend in Jasper County. People lost their lives and I just want to keep their families and their loved ones in our thoughts and prayers. It's a terrible tragedy anytime that you have three within a short amount of time. It's unheard of. So just keep their families in mind and your prayers as we go forward. Keep our country in your prayers as tomorrow is November 5th for our voting process. I encourage everybody to do so. We had our Southern Carolina Alliance quarterly board meeting last week, well attended. And you can tell from our agenda that our organization has been hard at work with projects for economic development, a lot of announcements coming out. So we're proud of the work with the SCA and all seven counties that they put into that as well. Want to remind everybody of our scholarship golf tournament December 2nd for the Jasper County Chamber of Commerce at Riverton Point. We're excited about that and that's where we give out scholarships to graduating seniors from each of the county's high schools to go towards their college education. So we're excited about that as well. And also, we have Big Thursday Oyster Roast at Jasper County Farmer's Market. And that's only that Thursday before Thanksgiving. I think that's the 20th. Can't remember what that is. I'll have to look. But that's always a well-attended event, so I encourage everybody to come and be a part of that. We roast about 40 bushels of oysters, have silent auction items, and the entertainment, the community comes together and we have a lot of fun. So the board of directors, we cook all the oysters, have a big time. So y'all, please come out and enjoy that as well. Ms. Clark, any, any other report?
Nope, but that's 21st of Oyster Roast.
I know I did fail to mention it myself and Councilman Kim met with the citizens at Abbey Glen last week, the week before last.
The week before last.
Some of their concerns with some flooding issues down there as well. Ms. Rowland?
I got a couple things. First, I'd like to offer condolences to the family of Steven Schmidt from the airport. He was one of the kind of the valued members of the RAC Association, as well as the pilots out there. Give our condolences to those folks. I did get the opportunity to attend the Soloco meeting that was in Hardyville. We did have a good dialogue about recycling and there was staff level present there. There are some good things, some good presentations that they did host on that. And possibly if we could get something like that, similar presentation here. Speaking of recycling, I did have the opportunity when I was at the solid waste centers this weekend. I've noticed something and maybe it's, maybe it's just me, but I think we really need to take a look at some of our solid waste areas to where it just appears contractors are dumping there, as well as your residents. And that is definitely a good asset to our citizens, not necessarily for the contractors. It's something that we can look into that to see if we can prevent contractors from doing so. It had the appearance of, I would like to give kudos to the Jasper County 250 Committee. My son took a field trip to the Old House area and where they were doing some excavations to that area. And he actually taught me some things I didn't even know about my own community here. So that was a very good thing there. Earlier today, I did have a conversation with the chairman about Highway 462 and some of the things there. I think he's going to try to reach out. And then also at staff level, we could reach out on 278 and Highway 462 to maybe see if we can find some tangible timelines of when the northern of 270, 462 can get repaired. Because we definitely, I'm pretty sure we got a lot of folks that are reaching out to us all. Hopefully sometime in the near future, we can possibly get a workshop as it pertains to some of the RVs and motorhomes and different things that are kind of setting up shop all over Jasper County. I've had several folks reach out to me and maybe we can segue that with some, with the code enforcement workshop that we can do, maybe first of the year or however we can get that. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to Lieutenant Kelly Lowery, being the county employee spotlight member of the month. Has been with the county for nearly 20 years now. She's tried and true and been here for a while. So definitely one of the persons that's paid their dues to the county and very helped elevate fire rescue. And then lastly, just remind folks to go vote. Tomorrow is the day. And thank you to our voters' registration office and their commitment the last couple of weeks with the amount of early voters that have come out and voted in this election. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I once attended the Mike Zimbor retirement event. Very nice. Did cry a lot, just letting you know. Very emotional. I attended the Habitat of Humanity presentation to the Jasper Arts Council about upcycled art auction in March. The last time they had it was raised $30,000. If you want, contact Michael Baker, Michelle Baker. I got the telephone number if anybody wants it, if you're interested in the March event. I attended today the Jasper tax sale. Very interesting. They had about 120 people there, I think. It was kind of amazing how many people were there looking for this property. And they asked how many people were heirs property. And I would say eight, 100 people were there looking for heirs property, which is kind of amazing, at least I think it is. Anyway. There will be a Veterans Appreciation Day on November 15th between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM at the Sockers Jack Park. So to all veterans and people who support veterans, please attend and show your support. Tomorrow is Election Day. There are a lot of people have sacrificed to have us this privilege. Please don't let it go in vain. And that's about it. Thank you very much. Oh, one more. Diabetes Awareness Month. It's rampant. It's rampant, especially in Jasper County. And how I know that is when I was on the election board. One of the questions on the news machine was, do you want sweet tea or unsweet tea? And I got, it started to get a little thing going. I knew people were here for their whole entire life, but they were saying unsweet tea. And I asked them one of them and everyone said, I have diabetes. It's amazing. So please do it. Take care of it. Go to the doctor and check it out. Thank you.
Okay, well, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Thank you, everybody, for being with us. And we'll call for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
You may have a stand up.